All right, good evening everybody. Accept the motion to reading being back to public session. Mr. Wells seconded, Ms. Bellarosa in the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have approval of minutes up from our March eleventh meeting, motion to accept. Ms. Keldner seconded, Ms. Bellarosa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Another approval of minutes for March twenty fourth, motion to accept. Mr. Wells seconded. All right, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving to our public recognition. Section of the agenda, so if anybody in the public would like to address the board now is the time. Now is the time to do it. Yeah, please say your name and--
My name is Aubrey Zambrella, my address is three one two four Route nine W, Saragides. I'm here ultimately to speak about special ed--
Can you turn the mic on?
Is it off?
Yeah, just pull that button on the front here, yeah, there you go.
Hello?
There you go, thank you.
You got it?
Yes, perfect.
So, I'm here ultimately to speak about the special ed population and mental health issues, but I'm actually not here to do that tonight because I know that's a longer conversation. Tonight, I'm here to take the first step. For the foreseeable future, I plan to send as many people, everybody on the board and our administration emails summarizing what I feel my family's experiences are and the obstacles that we have living in the district. The intention behind these emails is just to simply say what I need to say because I feel like I'm not saying it or I'm not saying it the right way and it's making me sick. I'm anxious, my stomach hurts all the time, so what I hope to do is just get this-- So what I hope to do is just get this off my chest and... and maybe do something. When you see massage by aubreyz@aal.com, you'll see that that's my email. And you'll see in the subject, summary, and a number. If you do not have the emotional space to read this, I invite you to hit delete. And I celebrate that because I know sometimes my cup is not full enough or it's empty, it's normally empty, and I can't take anymore. So if you can't take anymore, I'm good with that. I get it. I'm here for that. So tonight, I'm here so you have a clear image of who I am and what I look like. I know a lot of you. Our kids went to school together, we're friends, whatever. We know each other, some, but not everybody. Tonight, I'm here to let you know what you can expect in those emails from me. Right off the bat, I want to say I'm going to try my hardest to respect the rules. And I know right now, like, I know the rule, like, you're not allowed to address me directly. So I know, like, nobody's going to talk back to me. And you'll say stuff later on. I've been to board meetings many times, so I know how that goes. So I know a lot of the rules. And I'm a registered nurse and a licensed massage therapist, so I clearly, clearly and deeply understand confidentiality. So I am going to try my best with that. And I do try to read the bylaws. I try to, all the stuff you sent home, I really kind of try to read when I can. And I'm not telling you, sometimes I just glance because I do just look sometimes. And if I break a rule, correct me right away. I do, that's not my mission here. I don't want to break any rules. I want to play by the rules. So please, correct me. I also am going to respect your time because I get it. I can be long-winded. I'm going to try to be concise. We all, we all don't have time. The second thing you can expect always is honesty. Or redacted honesty because I don't want any names. I actually don't even want to tell you who the people are. I just want you to know what's happening because I feel like if you knew it, you would be like, oh, we have to change that. But maybe not. I don't know. I'm not even going to put that there. I'm not going to put any narratives to it. But I'm also going to be honest with myself. I'm going to be honest about my intentions when I write something. And I'm going to be honest with myself, my motives. If my motives are unpure, I am, I'm going to delete my own email before I send. So you have that promise from me. The third thing you can always expect from me is accountability. I will not make any promises I can't keep. If I apologize to you, know I really mean it. Know that I'm going to go back home, think about what I did, figure out why, and try not to do it again. So when I'm saying I'm sorry to you, I really want to learn from what I've done wrong. The last thing, the best thing, I have zero expectations. None, zero. I don't expect to change anything. I don't expect, if it happens, I'm happy, I'm here for it. I'm right there. But if it doesn't, I'm good with that too because I just need to do this and I need to show my kids there's another way of doing things. And sometimes it's just writing what you feel and sending it out to the universe and letting your community come back to you. So I'm trying to teach them that. So the other thing is, is that because I have a special ed kid, routine is not just something that's good for them. It's something I have to do. So unfortunately, it can't stay for the whole board meeting, but I will watch it on YouTube. So I thank everyone here, administration, board members, all of you. I feel like you are trying your hardest and I do feel like you're doing your best. And so am I. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from the audience?
This chair is here for a reason.
You can say it if you want, sure.
My name is Lanny Walter. I live in 301 Danbley, Department of Sawardies. I was a school board member in the 1990s. I'm here because among the many things you hear from the federal government is that they are planning to cut Title I funding to public education. And I would like to learn what the implications are for Sawardies. And so I hope you will share them at some point tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. All right. Anybody else in the audience? Okay. Moving on in our agenda. Oh, okay. She's going to wait for our student rep to return. All right. So we're going to skip over the student report when Ms. Mills returns. We'll have her come. So we're going to move on to Ms. Jamie Churchill, our Director of Special Education, who has a special ed update for us. Ms. Churchill.
I feel like that's it, but I don't feel like anyone who's presented has that yet.
You can take the mic. You can take the mic. Miss Molly will set that precedence while we're around with the mic. So whatever you want to do.
All right. And it's still on? We're good? And this little clicker, I'm hoping it's going to work for us, too. Excellent. So good evening. I'm Jamie Churchill, I'm the Director of Special Education. And this is kind of a brief update for you guys for the school year. First off, we're going to start with some follow-ups. As a lot of you may know, I began my journey here in Sawardies as the director at the beginning of last school year. And we took a deep dive into a special education audit so that we could get ourselves going in the right direction and fix a lot of the things that were going on that we needed to fix to be in compliance. So this is a little bit of a follow-up to that. You'll see the different areas that were addressed in the audit. And here's just some highlights of things that we're continuing this school year. We did do a special education handbook this summer, which is something that we all have access to on our special ed landing page, which is something new that came out of communication necessities for our department. The next section there talks about how we have building meetings for each of our buildings, including our building principals, our lead teachers. Lisa Kapler, our Director of PPS, and let's see, our school psychologists. We meet at least once a year to talk about the needs of the building and what our plan is moving forward. We do meet aside from that, but we have one dedicated specific meeting to talk about what the building might need for the following year. We are continuing our vertical special class program meetings. Those will happen at the, in the spring after we see the profiles that are being recommended for the case. We've asked for additional support from our CPC to build some of our programs. Our alternative learning program has support from our CPC. So this year, we got an additional social worker who has actually started. I believe what Lisa updated the board that individual hadn't. They were approved, but they haven't started. And she has started now at Cahill and it's been a really wonderful addition. And we're going to continue to ask them for more support for our junior high. Mental health supports for student needs. Obviously, our students still continue to have pretty significant mental health support needs. And we're continuing to look into those items. There will be a full, kind of detailed update this Friday from our action plan for the special ed report. So you'll see all of that as well.
Ms. Churchill? Can you give me a favor? Because there's a lot of acronyms and there may be, well, we know around this table. Just give me a 20-second of what RCPC is, just so people who are listening can understand what that is.
Rockland Children's psychiatric center. So they do the mental health support that is in partnership with our alternative learning program at Cahill. So they come in and support us with that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Next, we're just going to hop into some professional development and training highlights. We did this year engage in a targeted skills group for ELA, which I'll talk actually more about at the end, so I'll leave it at that. And we did actually train an additional individual in handle of care, who's actually our assistant principal over at Cahill, which has been really supportive. That program is the program that provides some de-escalation training. It's the primary focus, but then restraints as needed to keep children and faculty safe. Let's see. So department communication, always something that's really important. We have lead teacher meetings every month. We have our special education district plan that you all approved in December. Thank you very much. And we'll continue to update that each year. And then this year, in addition to that, I've held weekly meetings with our new department chair so that we can stay in communication at the junior teacher high. Next, our administrative structure. So I decided to update this so that you all had a little bit better vision of how the special education department works. Because I could not do my job without the support of all of the amazing people that work in special ed. So you'll see on this chart, I'm not going to go through the entire thing, but you can see how it all kind of comes together as Dr. Kapler is the Director of PPS, myself, our building principals are involved in special ed services, including chairing their own 504 meetings and school psychologists chairing meetings and being leaders in their buildings as well as the lead teachers. Some of the responsibilities that fall under the Director of PPS. You can see here, these are very similar to the year before. However, this year, she has taken on chairing CPSE meetings. So she has taken on that additional 58 meetings so far this year, but there will be a ton more as they transition into preschool services. She also does manifestation meetings. This is myself and my responsibilities. They expand kind of far. This is the simple way I'm putting it. CPSE in the spirit of defining acronyms is a committee on preschool special education office functions. So she works, one of the individuals that works for that kind of office pieces in my office. And I oversee those pieces while Lisa does meetings. I do chair the committee on special education for initials, program reviews, annuals, anything increasing services as advocates might be litigious. Something where it needs a little bit more mediation, that's something I'm doing. I'm also overseeing our budget, including our grant, the IDEA grant. 611, 619 falls under special ed. And we'll get more into that in the budget presentations later. I do the lead teacher meetings, maintaining and updating all of our plans, our procedures, our handbooks, our landing pages. And then PSC meetings, 148 to date. So there'll be a ton more before this school year is out. This is the caseloads for our school psychologists as their chair people. This is highlighted in that audit, just keeping in mind the caseloads of individuals who are school psychologists and their evaluations as well as their student supports. Looks like you have a question.
Yeah, I did. So this is sort of data in a vacuum. Is there any number on here we should be paying attention to? Is there something out of whack? Is there something that's tied to love?
So that's what I'm trying to look at. So you might notice that the total evaluations, so I don't want one person to be doing too many evaluations more than another. I might ask someone to support that were the case. That's kind of what I'm looking at there. And to make sure that I was able to decrease the number of annuals that they chaired as much as possible because that was one of the goals that I took over chairing meetings for. And then, as you'll know, here, Cahill with their FBAs and VIPS, that takes a lot of time and energy. And that one school psychologist is doing a lot of that above everyone else. This is a slide that I included because it's often a question that is asked. So on our report card, if you were to look up Sawardies Central School District on the report card, you're going to see the information that's in this first line, CSC in district beds day. It's going to tell you that our current percentage, or when it gets published for next year, is this 19.37%. That doesn't address the students that go to out-of-district placements. And it doesn't include the students that we serve that are parentally placed in our Woodstock Day School and Middleway Schools. So I kind of created my own number to give you kind of an idea of the total number of students we're really serving here in Sawardies in our special ed department and what percentage that is. So we're really more on this 22.78%. That's not really the number the state's going to look at for us, but it is something to consider because it is a very high percentage. Additionally, I just wanted to point out, I wrote it down over here, that we have 205 students transferred into Sawardies this year, 39 of them at IMEs. So we're seeing a huge number of students who aren't classified coming into Sawardies. You know, maybe we're doing something right and they want to come hang out with us in special ed. But it does tax our system.
So when you say parentally placed, does that mean like they, their parents took them to Woodstock Day and they're there and they're special ed students?
Yeah, so parents can choose that's how they get to Woodstock Day School or Middleway. They have to pay to go to that school, but they can still be tested and evaluated in special ed.
Okay.
But we don't offer anything there above and beyond like a resource room. If they need more support, they come back into our buildings.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Actually, and related services as well. We do have OT, speech pathologists. And no one needs ET there right now, but we would if they did. And then you'll see the preschool numbers as well, which kind of fluctuates. And you'll see, I think, an increase towards the end of the year. That number kind of dumps out at a certain point in the year because three-year-olds or four-year-olds are moving to five-year-olds and the three-year-olds are moving from early intervention. And then here's some declassification numbers. And I actually think that might be a couple more higher because I got an email later from a week after. I did this presentation that we are declassifying a few more students this year.
Sorry, can I just ask, is 20%, is that pretty close to the state average? Or how does that compare?
It's high. Yeah, so I would say a lot of our other competitors are at about 18%. Some of them are increasing up to 20%, but 22% is looking at least that case. She wants to add anything there. Exactly. And then this is a slide I also included because it's often a question that the board wants to know is about graduation rates for special education students. So you'll see here the colors kind of highlight the cohort year, right? So in 2017, our seniors who graduated are right here. That's about 84%. Our special ed population was about 65% that graduated. And then the next year, a couple more special ed students that were originally in this cohort graduated, so we increased to 70%. And then we kind of stayed stagnant the following year for that cohort. So that's kind of how the cohorts travel, if that makes sense to you. And so then if you're kind of comparing, then the next, the next kind of cohort, so this would have been from 2023, they would have graduated. And include obviously the whole chart for everything. You can kind of look at it later yourselves, but that's kind of the explanation of that. So then in 2024, this past school year, we had 27 students with disabilities graduate out of 36, and that graduation rate was about 75%. So it is still less than our general student body. All right. This is just copied and pasted from our district plan. So all of the programs that we offer this school year, I'm going to highlight on this next slide, the changes that we're making for this upcoming school year. So you'll see over on this side, integrated co-teaching. If I go back to the old slide. This year, we have integrated co-teaching starting in second grade, second through fourth grade. It's just ELA and math. And fifth and sixth grade, it's for the whole day. So what we're deciding to do for next school year, based on some team meetings that we had in talking about early intervention and the resources that we have available to us given our budget constraints, we're deciding to move to a model where we have co-teaching for ELA and math, K through sixth, all day. The science and social studies blocks will be supported with teaching assistance, but this way we can provide a little bit more time with the special ed teacher earlier on so that we can hopefully intervene and maybe need less support later on as students scale there. Additionally, here, you'll see that we don't have... Additionally, here, you'll see that we don't have an ABC program, which is our academic behavior communication academy at the junior high. But due to the need of the sixth graders moving up to seventh grade, we've got about four, five students, um, that would have to be placed in out of district placements, um, if they didn't have this program. So we are going to add this program in for next school year. Um, but that will be, it will not be an additional person. Um, it is, uh, we're gonna rework how we're using our special ed teachers at the elementary schools to make this work. Um, this is just a list of places we have students that are out of district and the number of students that you can see. Uh, therapeutic transition program is not a special ed program, but it's something that we use a lot of foster work. So just to watch the numbers, you'll see that just at this point in the school year, we're at nine and four. Uh, for, this is the short-term therapeutic transition program and long-term therapeutic transition program. And then last, I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we're doing to align with the blueprint that we've, uh, really taken a deep dive into, uh, the Saragordis School District. So academic excellence, we are doing walkthroughs and professional development with Rory Riddens. He's the systems change facilitator from the Mid Hudson Regional Partnership Center. He's come in and done some professional development for us. And we've done some walkthroughs with, um, some of our, uh, special ed lead teachers, which is awesome. Uh, just kind of thinking about how we're using co-teaching, how we're using explicit vocabulary instruction and trying to increase the rigor for special ed students. Family and community engagement. Uh, we are trying, as we, as we might, to get a parent counseling and training initiative together. Um, it's falling a little bit flat each year, but we are still working on it. So it's something that's highlighted. We also did do our sixth grade transition night this year, which was a success. We had several families come in and meet with the, the special ed teachers. Professional culture, um, we are going to offer co-teach training for our new teaching teams. So as you noticed with those changes, we are going to have new co-teaching teams that are working with different gen ed teachers next year. We wanna make sure that they're prepared to do so. Um, handle with care, we've talked a bit about, um, kind of how we're using that and doing some concentrated training on limit setting and some other initiatives at K-Hill. We're constantly trying to use the new evaluations. We adopted, uh, the CTOC, um, which I'm gonna remember what that stands for. Phonological processing is what it, what it looks at. I'm not gonna remember exactly, don't quote me on that. Uh, but to try to identify which students, students might need special class reading, um, looking at the WJ five, which is a new test that, uh, does academics and cognitive scores. That's renormed for the post-COVID students, so that's very exciting. The BOP three, a similar thing that's looking at gross motor and by motor sales. Continuing our vertical team meetings. And the Sawyer experience, we're partnering, you'll see on your agenda today, C3Quest, who is an agency that's looking to do some job coaching and training for students and get them internships and students who have a diagnosis that could be final for specialist students or even just a student with a diagnosis that, uh, is looking to partner with outside agencies and help us kind of work towards that goal, uh, that we set through our blueprint. And let's see, oh, and lastly, to kind of continue with the Sawyer experience, our sixth grade transition meetings with the teachers, where the teachers get to sit with the, uh, and the sixth grade teachers get to sit with the seventh grade teachers and really talk about the students so that we can make sure we get a nice fit for them when they transition up, um, so that they're the most successful they can be. I'm sorry, that was a lot, but that's it. Any questions?
No, thank you. Mr. Churchill, I think we got our questions out as we went along. Pretty good? Alright. Thank you. Alright, we are gonna revert back now that she can see.
Sorry.
I thought you were just going to thaw out from the trash. I thought that you were taking them in, so. So our next up is our, um, student representative report. Um, and just for people who don't know, Ms. Meredith Mills is our student representative. Um, she's a senior here. And it's nice that we, this, this program that we have with representatives on the board from the students, is next year, the state is actually mandating that all school districts happen. So we're sort of ahead of the curve on this. Um, and this Mills so far has done wonderful job. I turn the floor to you.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. For, at the elementary school level, all elementary students are doing their best work on the New York State ELA assessment this week. Elementary principals are very proud of their students for showing their knowledge and doing their best. At Moore's Elementary School, students had their drama club production of Annie and their sixth-grade lipstick. Both were great showcases of student talent. K-Hill's Got Talent was Friday, April fourth, and we are in final rehearsals for the spring concert, which is Wednesday night, April ninth. At the high school level, as you may already know, students enrolled, computer, this, sorry. The students enrolled in computer video and production and broadcast journalism have been collaborating with Alman Magnetics to develop a video about the company. We just notified, we just, we were just notified last night that the video created by SHS students has been posted to the Alman website. If you would like to view the video, please visit alamagnetics.com. Thank you to all that made, all that made this happen. Ms. Malino's staff work would like to thank parents and guardians and students that attended parent teacher conference night in March. Mock trial took, took place March nineteenth in the high school media center. Great job to all students that participated. The Spring Pops concert was held on March seventh. It was a great performance by all. And our seniors leave for their Disney trip this Friday, and we wish them safe travels. Upcoming events and dates, National Honor Society induction ceremony is Thursday, April fourth at seven, no, April tenth, sorry. At seven thirty PM. We have a blood drive on April twenty-third in the senior high gym. And AP testing starts May fifth and goes till May sixteenth. I don't know this acronym. The New York State.
Nice plus one.
Nice plus one? Okay, I'm sorry. Testing also begins April fourteenth and runs through May twenty-third. I'm sorry about that. Any students that will be a junior or senior next school year that has been in the district for a minimum of one year and is interested in serving as a twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six student board of education representative, please contact Ms. Malino as soon as possible. The application deadline is April twenty-fifth. And junior high news, New York State assessments began today. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Alright. I'm gonna respond to your agenda here. Alright, superintendent's report, budget presentation.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Uh, I know that when I get going, I just be fast, so if you need me to slow down, just yell me. Alright, so today we're gonna talk about, uh, budget information. So before we get going on numbers wise, just kind of an overview, right? So board member petitions are due on or before April twenty-first. April twenty-first, there is no school, but our office will be open to drop those off. April twenty-second, which is Tuesday, uh, the boards will set the, the budget for vote. Uh, public hearing for public vote, we have May sixth, May twentieth will be the vote. And they'll count the affidavits and budget results on the twenty-seventh.
Doctor, can I interrupt you for one second? I just want, on the, on the April twenty-first thing.
Yes.
Um, so over the last week or so, there's been a lot of activity and communication around our district. This is the time, like, if people really want, emails are wonderful, conversations are wonderful. If anybody would like to run for the board, get your petition. How many petitions do we have in right now?
Zero.
Zero, okay. Alright, thank you. That's all I want.
Alright, so a little bit of background, right? So in a school district, we've got several budgets that operate. The general fund or the aid code is what gets voted out by the board, okay? We also have the full, the school ser, sorry, school food service fund, C. Special aid fund, that gets, we have nearly applications for that. That goes to Mr. Walter's question before, which I'll talk about. The capital project, uh, fund, so that, that's, uh, approved through voting for a capital project and then our debt service. So in our special aid fund, right, this is not what the voters vote on. It's just a little bit of background information, alright? We have special aid or through, through federal funding, so our IDEA funding for special education. We have title one, title two, and title, uh, four. We also do receive some title three funds, but they flow, flow through also BOCs. So when the question comes up about federal funding in the future, right here, you see that this current school year allocation is roughly like one point three million dollars, alright? So that's kind of the amount in question about whether we'll get it or if it would be passed to the states and if there'll be a different formula or so forth. But this is the amount of federal funding that we get. This, once again, does not touch our general budget, alright? This does support some of our efforts in terms of PD, staff, and so forth, but this is not what the voters vote on. This is additional money that we use and we plan for. Uh, in the special aid fund is also the, the funding that we get for universal pre-K. So as you've heard me say multiple times before, right? We do get a, we do get a UPK grant through New York State. We get about five thousand eight hundred dollars per student. We get the money based on the actual enrollment as of bed day or as of, as of the date in March. That's the money that we get for our students. We then, um, pay our provider with that money for them. So once again, this is not, this is, does not affect the general aid, just background information of, of additional funds that we get. In the past, we did have the federal.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
You know, kind of just going back to what you were saying about the special aid and whether you're gonna split later, this is not the general fund, but if the funding from the federal government is impacted and as you say, we use these funds to support our program, would we need to consider putting additional one point three million dollars into our budget to support any of this?
Right, so if we wanted to maintain the stuff that we have, which is some, some of the staff, some of the professional development, then we would need to adjust for that. Alright.
Can I just add to that? I know we, I didn't talk about it in my presentation, but those pass-through funds go to special ed students that are Saragordis students. But that doesn't come to our building, so that first one that you're looking at, IDEA part B, six eleven, a lot of that money is not actually money that we're spending. It's just for, they let us know, we have this number of students, there's a formula, and we send that money to them and they do within what they would like. So it's not actually even ours. And that's on top of what we pay for.
You said, you said it.
The, the schools.
Outside of place.
Right, like wraparound, Brookside, those kinds of schools. Okay, got it.
Some of the funding we get for, uh, title one and two actually goes to our private schools as well. Um, in years past, we did receive funding associated with, with COVID, right? So part of that money was spent on elementary summer academy in the past, as well as summer enrichment. Those were our, kind of our last two carryovers that were in, in place this summer, right? Without those funds though, we do not have funding right now to support those two programs, alright? So that's why it's up here, because this was a carryover from the federal funds, uh, that we used this past summer, but those funds are no longer in existence. So once again, that was just a little bit of background. Now we're gonna jump into the general funds, uh, which the voters will vote on. Alright, tax out calculation, we have gone through this a couple of times already. So I'm just gonna jump around a little bit with the highlights, alright? Uh, actual inflation is two point nine five percent, but according to the formula, we can use a max of two percent, right? So once again, this is saying that items are getting more expensive, with school districts are capped at two percent, okay? Follow all the calculations down, against our tax levy of about forty-seven point three million dollars, which is an increase from the prior year of one point five six eight million, okay? That would require a simple majority, so we just have to get fifty plus one, fifty percent plus one. Okay? Other aids that we get are some of our state aids, so we get foundation. So right now, uh, according to the governor's run, we are scheduled to get seventeen point eight million dollars, which is an increase of two point four nine percent from last year. Now that's for the governor's, from her proposal. Each house has, has their own proposals. Uh, the one house, I think, is like two point nine percent, and one was a little bit more than, than, than that as well. But we don't know exactly what we're getting because the state budget is not on time, right?
So we won't know the exact amount of foundation aid until the state budget is passed.
Correct, so in theory, the board has to adopt a budget on the twenty-second. We still may not have the, the true number from, from state head, or not from state head, but from, from the New York State rather.
Is that, is that the highest run? Is that the percentage increase, the highest run we've got so far of the governor's budget?
So, yeah, this is from the governor's budget, the one house, the senate and assembly bill, they, they had to add higher numbers?
That's what you're saying, it's two point nine.
Correct, so, so we could, we could get another like ninety thousand dollars if, if that happens, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna jump around a little bit, cause we, I, we showed these numbers before, right? So minor increase in, in foundation aid. Here are other, uh, expense-based aids, right? Expense-based aid because we have expense money and then we get a reimbursement the following year. We get money back the, the following year. So high tax aid, that's been consistent, as Dr. Tim said, over the years. Transportation is actually going down a little bit. Uh, building aid is going up because we have completed the majority of our twenty-two million dollar capital projects. So we're getting, uh, the refund on that, or the aid, I should say, rather. BOC's aid has actually gone down. Um, this is because our reimbursement rate has gone down, alright? It's not that we've used less services, it's really that our, our reimbursement rate has gone down, okay? Public access, uh, high cost, so for, for students who are high cost within our districts and then private, for students who are out of our districts who are over that, that threshold for new services. Okay? Software aid, you see an increase as well. Library is pretty, uh, steady. Textbook aid, a little bit, about thousand dollars. Hardware aid, up slightly, and then supplementary aid, okay? So now we're gonna get to our kind of total revenues, so putting everything together. So we've got our tax levy, if we go to the tax levy of forty-seven million. Foundation aid of seventeen point eight million. Our expense-based aid, so those numbers that, that I just ran through, eight point five million roughly. Our BOC's refunds, so every year we do get a refund from BOCs. This past year was five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna project six hundred thousand dollars last year, or, sorry, for next year. We did talk to them, and we talked to them last year too. There's not really a reliable way to predict that, but that's consistent with historical trends. Alright, health and welfare services, so that's us billing for services that we provide for two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and basic tuition for one seventy-six. Alright, other revenues would be leases, Medicaid, pilots, so payment in lieu of taxes. There was a decrease here of, uh, to be twenty-nine thousand dollars. That's because we have two pilots that have not paid, and we're working with our attorneys to get paid for those pilots, alright? On paper, they should be paying, so we, we did incorporate that for this year as well. Interest and earnings, right, interest rates remain high. Reimbursement, other revenues. Uh, E-rate, inter-fund transfer, tax and penalties. Uh, prepay services, oh, sorry, prepay service providers, right? So that was us taking, taking the initiative last year to hire staff to provide, uh, services, speech and OT for our students, for our preschool students who require those services, who were not getting it previously, because we're not a provider's thing in the county. Uh, homeless, I have the yellow box here in case, uh, because we identified if the board is willing to use reserves or fund balance. So that gives us a total revenue of seventy-six point nine million dollars, okay? So that's the money that we anticipate coming in. Now, we do have time before the board adopts a budget on the twenty-second, so we're gonna continue to refine and see if we can, uh, if there's other reasonable changes that we can make.
Dan or Michelle, just cause it's a, it's a line item that I'm sure some people are like, you're getting, it's a pretty big number. Explain what the homeless number is, just because it's also our most impacted people.
Sure, we will, um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, um, we receive homeless aid comes from New York State, um, and it's based on the number of students, um, that are, that are in the district that, um, are from another district. So they're coming to Saragordis, but it's the residents where they were placed, where they became homeless, is the district of origin, and they pay us.
So in that determination, being homeless is determined by the county or the saying?
It is.
That labels that student homeless.
Determined by the county, but there's a whole host of rules that have to be applied.
Okay, and that district they're coming from, we receive money from that district.
Okay.
I just wanted people, that's a, people would wonder why we get five hundred thousand dollars for homeless.
And if we're homeless, right, it's not necessarily that they don't have a place to live. It's if they're doubled up, it's if, right, they have unstable housing, uh, if they're in foster care.
Dan, just a quick question. So this is on the revenue side, but are there, we're getting paid for homeless students in other districts, but are, are there any, where do we see if we have homeless students that we need to pay?
Yes, if, if a district receives a student that was from Saragordis, they will contact us and, um, we bear. and we verify, we have verification rules on both sides. We have students, they have students, and then they will bill us.
So is this a net number or is this just the revenue side?
That's just the revenue side.
Okay.
The other, the other pieces would be in the expense side, but some would be with transportation costs.
Transportation, okay.
So just as a graph right now, just so you can see where our revenue comes from, right? So right now, without using fund balance or reserves, tax levy would make up 61.6% of our budget. Expense-based aid and foundation aid, so right, so state aids is roughly 20, sorry, 34%, I'm doing the math off in my head, and then other revenue, 4.2%. If the board likes to use appropriated, or fund balance as well as reserves, then obviously these little budgets will change slightly, okay? Just comparing it to last year, so this was last year's graphic on it, right? Our tax levy was 59.3% and so forth, so we're pretty close. And once again, if we do appropriate other funds, then we should be pretty close to what, what that was, okay? Now we're gonna take through the budget development side, right? So we already know what our revenues are, now we're going through the budget, right, just kind of starting from scratch, seeing what we need to maintain, where we can save, and putting others to it, okay? So some of the factors affecting this year's budget, and some of these I've gone through before, but IPAR, right? So IPAR is, is an amazing opportunity for our students who participate in CTE and BOCs, right? They're gonna be occupying the first and second floors, I said it on the video yesterday. The first and second floors of the building with the clock tower, with the, with the clock tower. It's a great opportunity, but at the same point in time, right, there is an expense for, for addition for that, so that's an additional 231,000. D-HIC, right, insurance is going up, active members are going up by 7.52%. TRS contribution, so teachers' retirement system. The retirement contribution rate is actually going down slightly to 9.59, that's the estimated rate, but there's also new money because salaries increased, so there's additional expenses for those, all right? ERS contributions, employee retirement system, that's going up to 16.5%. The temperature, law was recently passed where next year, if a room is above 82 degrees, you have to take proactive steps to cool the room. If it's above 88 degrees, you have to leave the space. So we have brought around and we've identified which classrooms would need window AC units to help mitigate that, and we're anticipating a cost of 50,000 for those new units. In addition, the cell phone ban, so while the, while the budget is not passed yet, as part of the budget, the governor is, is requesting that there be a belter bell, cell phone ban. As part of that, we haven't seen the exact language as to what it would be, but they'll have to store the, store devices somehow. We did reach out and we did get a quote for one, one form of, of cell phone storage device, which was 47,000 at the time of the quote, so that was about a month and a half ago for that, so those things could change a lot. General insurance, we have had a number of claims, particularly water claims in the past couple of years, so we, our premium could theoretically double. And then long-term therapeutic programs, so our LTT program, so we have some students who have participated in a short-term therapeutic program. We need additional support and go into a long-term therapeutic program, drill for BOCs. Other districts are pulling out of this. We share the cost for that, so if a district pulls out, right, then every other district who's still in it picks up some of that cost, right? On, on our thinking, though, is, is that the cost of this is gonna be cheaper than sending those kids out of district somewhere else, okay? Kind of the cost-benefit analysis. Other factors, we've got two administrators who we are not replacing, one's retiring. One was, it changed mid-year, we have not filling our director of HR position, all right? So some work, well, obviously, we distributed work. We are exploring a coser for home instruction students to go for that process to verify paperwork and so forth for that. One teacher retirement, which we will not be replacing, right? But if you don't replace a teacher, there's gonna be less opportunities for students in terms of electives, scheduling, and so forth. Three teacher retirements we do need to replace, there is some salary breakage there. One technology employee retirement, we will need to, we will need to replace that, so hopefully there'll be some salary breakage. We just got word that one of our nurses is gonna retire, it's, she's on the agenda today, additional breakage. We have a, do you have a, do you have, sorry, we do have a 0.6 social studies teacher that we, that we could reduce. Currently, we pay for BOCs technology support. If we bring that support in-house, we feel that we can provide more support for, for the saving cost. E&amp;L, we have, we have received 18 new ELL students this year. Majority are at KL at the elementary level, but this is requiring our 0.4 FTE to be increased to 1.0 FTE to provide the required minutes. This is a federally required mandate of number of instructional minutes for students, depending on what level they are at. Modified sports, this, this budget does include modified sports, bringing it back into the budget. It does include field trips back into the budget, and then it does include an additional TA for academic behavior communication program that Jamie explained previously. Other factors, right, enrollments, based on our current enrollment in our elementary schools, we would need to create a third section of sixth grade at KL, all right? Also, right at this time, we do have a traveling MTSS teacher who travels between KL and Ercardi. Based on our numbers, we feel that we can provide those services in the building without having that person traveling. So we can offset the additional section with the traveling MTSS teacher, all right? Special ed placements are always a driver of budgets, right, in terms of out-of-district placements and what services they need, whether it be BOCs or a, another placement that could be up in Albany, down in Poughkeepsie, or so forth, right? That we're always looking at those. Jamie's always anticipating where kids are gonna be, even if they're not placed right now. She has an idea of what program might fit, and we pledge it for that as well. Transportation, we do have a large bus contract, so we can calculate where our transportation would be for that. We did have a RFP for small bus contracts, so we're reviewing those documents, and we'll be able to take that, that proposal to put into our, our budget as well. Then there are the things that we need to continue working on, right? So the science of reading alignment, New York State is requiring all school districts to certify that their instruction is aligned with the science of reading, right? While we have made progress towards that, there's gonna be more resources, more training, that's gonna be needed to make sure that we do, that we do in fact meet those requirements. The blueprint, right, the blueprint is our North Star, our, our guide, right, as to where we're gonna go in the future, so we do need to take all those things into consideration as we are planning for this budget. Woodstock Day School, so Woodstock Day School is one of our private schools. We are required to provide nursing services at our private schools, as well as a social worker if they request it, okay? In the past, we have provided, we have provided a nurse to Middleway, and we have provided funds to Woodstock Day School. And speaking with our attorneys, we actually need to provide an actual physical person who is a Sorgdys employee to Woodstock Day School. So there is gonna be increase in nursing needs to meet that requirement. Similarly, if they, they have requested a social worker, so we need to send a Sorgdys type of school employee to the school to provide social workers services. There is a calculation that we need to take, which will tell us exactly how long they should be there, because the services we provide to them has to match the services provided in district, okay? But there is an additional cost for that. Other items, currently, right now, through all BOCs, we have our PR specialists with us for five days a week, right? So additional savings could be going down to four days a week.
Hey, Dan?
Yes?
Could you go back?
Yep.
So Woodstock Day School?
Yes.
Is a tuition-based institution, so if I were to send my kid there, I'm gonna get a bill. So tuition goes to Woodstock Day School. We, as the Sorgdys Central School District, have to provide a nurse and a social worker.
Yep.
Free of charge to the tuition-based institution.
What we do is there's a calculation for health services that we do, it's all our health services, and you guys, the board has approved it each year, and this year was about $1,000 to people. We bill Woodstock Day School for the number, well, we, we bill the districts that are sending them there for the number of students that are there, but then we are required to send them a nurse or a social worker for whatever they provide, whatever they request, and the, the point is that.
So what you're explaining to me in this line I might see here is a zero-sum game?
Well, in this case.
Which is fine if it's a zero-sum game.
Yes.
It is.
And in this case, well, it's more than that sometimes for us. So we are getting, we are receiving revenue, I believe it would be talked about, say, on 165 students that, for the different schools at Woodstock Day. Schools for us that are going out there, we'll be paying about 65,000, so there, there's a net difference of over $100,000 at this point, to the good for Sorgdys.
Oh, okay, all right. That's affecting our budget in a positive way.
But at the same time, it's also based on the employee that we send and what step they're on.
Okay.
We've gone through looking at supply lines and material line items to see where we can reduce, again, for historical trends. We're using technology purchase, purchases, right? So we talked about reducing, purchasing less interactive displays, using our current technology. We're changing our backup phone system for our savings, and then looking at software, one example would be eliminating Panorama client, time survey. Not that we're not gonna do it, but we feel that we, we can find, there are free surveys out there that we can implement with the current tools that we have, such as Microsoft Perps. Other things to consider is our, our monitor pay as well as our substitute pay. So these have not changed in two years, so we would also recommend increasing compensation for 50 cents per hour to remain competitive with neighboring districts, okay? Jamie already shared the change in special education, right? So this is not, what, as she says, is not a new teacher, is a repurposing of a teacher. We will need to hire a TA to support that classroom. Other budget considerations would be a possible capital outlet project at Ercardi. Where we met with, with facilities, we came up with, with the following ideas of additional flooring, additional ADA egresses, a ramp upstairs so that the entire building is ADA accessible, as well as possibly installing AC mini splits in that part of the building. One question that always comes up, so I'm just gonna address it now, right, is our administrative stack. So I did show this previously, here's our administrators from 23, 24, and then here would be our proposed administrators from 25, 26. So you can see, central office-wise, we will be down in Director of HR, Elementary Project Coordinator, those are the two positions I referenced earlier. We, we, we had an athletic director slash assistant principal to, to, well, last year. That position has been gone, and we, but we do have a stipend at Athletic Director, two athletic directors at this point. So with those changes that I've identified on there, right, some increases, some decreases, everything out, here is what the numbers tells, okay? So the Board of Education is central administration, 2.3 million, increase of 266,000. BOCs admin and capital, so just under a million to 1.2. A large part of this is the IPAR coming online, thus having a lease payment for that. Instruction, so 38.5 million to 40.2 million, right, so that's increases in salaries, supplies, and so forth, all right? Facility, security, central services, 3.6 billion, just a little increase for that. Technology, once again, a little increase, about $60,000. Transportation, an increase of 276,000. Sports and co-curricular, an increase of $100,000. Once again, a large part of that would be bringing modified sports back into the budget. Benefits, 20 million three to 20 million eight. Debt service, 2.9 to 2.6. Transferred other funds, going down from 425,000 to 305,000 for a grand total of anticipated expenses of 80.1 million, okay? Or an increase of 3.79%. So taking our starting budget and our anticipated revenues, we do have a shortfall of 3.1 million, okay? In order to balance the budget, as Dr. Tim shared last time, we have kind of two options or a combination of the two options, all right? So one would be to increase revenue, right? So how do we increase revenue in a school district? We're, as we said earlier, we're gonna keep on examining our, our anticipated revenues, right? Can we adjust any of those numbers? When the state budget comes through, you know, can I adjust the foundation aid, okay? Use of fund balance and reserve, like we did this past year, right? And then as Dr. Tim mentioned, try to recruit that lost tax revenue or move up the tax cap, right? It's a possibility. On the other side, we can also look to decrease expenditures, right, cost reductions. As Dr. Tim said, we could pull away from student programs first, that was a recommendation, right? The other thing I did put up here, just to kind of keep in the back of everybody's mind, as we've talked about it, and Dr. Tim wrote it up for us too, we have 52 SDA members with 25-plus years of longevity, so longevity is service in the district itself, right? So that means over, theoretically, over the next five years, right, we've got 52 of our SDA members who could possibly retire, right? So just kind of keeping that out there, that that is possible as well, okay? This was just aside from, from Dr. Tim's, right, his sharing, right? Those years that we did not go to the tax cap, right, have added up, so we could potentially have had 700,000 more money, or, sorry, 900,000 and, sorry, 8 million more spent on our kids over that time, okay? So one way to increase revenues was to use our reserves and fund balance. So here are current levels of reserves and fund balance. They do remain healthy, right? 3 million employee retirement reserve, this goes to payments to cover employee retirement reserves expenses or contributions, right? Our TRS reserve, same thing, employee benefit liability reserve. So this reserve can be used to pay benefits when they sever their employment with us, right? So since they're retirees, we can pay out their unused days and so forth. Our undecided fund balance, capital reserve is only for capital projects. Workers' compensation reserve, 250 million, sorry, 250,000. Undeployment reserve, 117, and then tax machinery, just under 50,000 for those. So using these reserves as we had planned this year is still a possibility, okay? The funding is still there.
Okay, can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
And you said it's healthy, which obviously it is, but when, I think Dr. Tim spoke earlier, he kind of said it's healthy, but comparatively to a lot of other districts, it's actually like quite, quite small.
Correct.
Just kind of put in perspective.
So, yes, just to reemphasize that point, right? Because we have 4.7 million in capital reserve, that money is tied up earmarked for that, right? So if you take that out, then comparatively to our neighboring districts, we're not as well off. Thank you for bringing that up, okay? So if we're looking at possible reductions, right, we're gonna be looking to our non-mandated items, right? Where can we reduce that is not required? So I'm gonna be listing off a slew of things, all right? So number one is armed security. So armed security is anticipated to cost around 350,000, right? It is not required. We did just finish, or finishing, our 22 million dollar capital project, which does have vestibles. So if we were to eliminate our armed security, we would need to still have somebody there to let people in, right? So whether it be a monitor like it used to be before we had armed security, right? It's a possibility. Athletics, we can reduce the number of games that sports play, right? So instead of basketball playing 20 games, they can play 18. There's, there is a savings there. We can also reduce the number of coaches, right? So for modified wrestling, there's two coaches right now, we only had five kids, I think it was, right? So there is justification there to, to remove a coach. Modified athletics, we can pull that back into the budget, our athletic trainer is not required. Club stipends, right? So we do offer a lot of clubs for our students to provide opportunities, right? But there is a cost associated with those things. Social worker in each building, when I first came to Sorgdys, social workers and psychologists were split between our elementary schools, going back and forth each day. Since COVID, we've been able to have a dedicated social worker and psychologist in each building, but we don't necessarily need to, right? It's not mandated to. Secondary core teachers, in theory, right, if we were to eliminate teaming, we could be more efficient for them, but at, there's a cost, right? It's gonna be higher class sizes, and maybe less opportunities for our students. Department chairpersons as well. Recently, who, this may have been three years, I mean, two years ago now, our advocacy specialist who's bilingual, so originally started out at KL kind of full-time, now is splitting between KL and the high school to, to use her in translation and interpretive services for us. Elementary R, elementary library, field trips, as we reduced last year. We do have one remaining as functional coach. We do have one remaining as functional coach, part-time counselor for elementary. We do have a, right, this year we do have a part-time who's just going around to elementary. In the past, we did have our secondary counselors pushed down, down to the elementary, right? The trade-off is, and they're not in the, in the high school, Alphagar, Junior, Senior High School students during those days, in elementary. So those are non-mandated items. So with that, before I continue on. Well, I'll keep going. Yeah.
We have two open contracts with our bargaining units.
We have three that are coming up at the end of this year.
Three. So this, for the sake of everybody exposed here, how does that impact our anticipated expenditures? Is that already incorporated in there? How?
Sure. So we have-
How should the public think about the fact that we have three bargaining units? We're going to be looking to settle their contracts in the midst of this is our fiscal picture. So what should we be, you know?
Yes. So because of this, you know, we as a district have to plan for, we understand there's going to be some increase, right? So we have to plan for a reasonable amount, and that is also in the conversation for the board as well. So I guess another way to say this is that we've planned for some, and we'll see how the negotiations go. The question always comes up too, what happens if the budget does not pass? Okay. So if the budget does not pass, the revote, we could revote in June, or we can adopt a contingency budget. I did include the link to the contingency, to a document that kind of outlines the budgeting for schools as well as focus on our contingency budget. In sum though, we cannot have a capital outlet project, no new equipment purchases, and then obviously reductions in opportunities for kids, kind of stuff. The public cannot use, well, they can use our public space that they have to pay for, and the elimination of non-essential building maintenance. And then, once again, armed security in terms of that community impact, because the community really pushed for that in the first place, why they moved there. So with that- Sure.
Right. So the contingency budget, we also have that power of what we did spend money on, right? It's not just.
Yes. So we actually cannot go, the tax levy cannot be increased, so that's, so that's going to be a big factor in it. And then there are certain things which are excluded and then non-excludable, excluded items.
Okay.
Okay.
And then if I could just ask people to speak into the mic, I know it's a pain, but if you're not speaking into the mic, I can't hear you at all, so I don't know what the other questions are.
Okay.
Thanks.
The hockey puck's on. Board member elections. Just as a reminder, there are three seats up for election packets available. Monday, the twenty-first, they're due in the superintendent's office in the back. Even though we're closed, the office will still be open. On Tuesday, they will draw the order and the ballots. Candid expenditures are due, identified under, as well as the vote. All right. So with that, I'm going to go back to this slide here. Okay. So right now, with the starting budget I'm referring to, it has eighty million dollars. The anticipated revenue is about seventy-six point nine. We have a difference of three point one million dollars. So this is where I would like to gauge from the board your willingness to increase revenues, possibly by appropriating funds from fund balance or reserves, and then a desire to also reduce that budget further.
Just asking questions to start. This is a lot of information to, because this is working, to unpack. So just some general questions as we went through the information. So just going back to the factors affecting the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget. We state that there's some teacher retirements, technology nurse retirement, and we anticipate some savings on breakage. Is that material, not material, given we know how hard it has been to replace people in the past year, like in the past years? And will we need to be hiring people at higher steps than we maybe expect to hire them? So the breakage is not, I'm just trying to gauge really the materiality of the breakage, what do you expect?
So by SDA contract, the highest that we can bring somebody in is step fifteen. So in our calculations, we replace a retiree at step seven, figuring that sometimes it will be a little bit above, sometimes it will be a little bit below. But, I mean, to your point, right, if we go out and try to hire, we have one applicant who's got, you know, ten years of service, right? We don't have initially a lot of choice. So we'd have to make an offer and hopefully accept.
Right. Okay. So that was kind of my question. The increase in new ELL students for this year, and I know that we all, they all pretty much go to Cahill. But some are districted in other elementary schools when we talk about the elementary ELL population. And we talked about in the past, the student concentration between Cahill and Riccardi. And has there been any thought of being able to service, say, the Riccardi ELL students within Riccardi? If, by splitting the staff, instead of having all the staff at Cahill, move some of the staff to Riccardi? Is there any savings on the transportation of getting those kids from Riccardi to Cahill? So is there, is there anything that we can do within that environment that may save money?
Sure. So in terms of ENL, so every student takes a test and it dictates the amount of services that they need. So they might need ninety minutes of a standalone ELA class, or ENL class, sorry. It might be ninety minutes of an integrated class. And then at the high school, they even actually have up to five hundred forty minutes of instruction. So if we take, just for argument's sake, second grade, right, and if there's three Riccardi kids and they go to Riccardi second grade, and then there's two Cahill kids that stay in Cahill, I don't need to service both of those kids. So I would actually need additional staff to support those students, or have staff travel back and forth between the building. So by having them all in one location, I can service all of my grade two ENL kids in their English class, you know, from one forty-minute time slot instead of one forty-minute time slot at Cahill and then one forty-minute time slot at Riccardi. The other thing is, is that we do get, right, a lot of influx during the, really coming and going. So part of our struggles with ENL is on September second, we can have one plan, right? We get three kids, then we have to shuffle everything up to make sure that those new kids get their services too. So by having them all in one central location, it allows for greater efficiency that way. Right, Dr. Keppler?
And we can't, you can't put more than two grade levels together. That's another problem. It's a little bit more strict than the special ed.
So for a standalone ENL class, we could have, you know, K and one together, which creates efficiency.
Okay. So one of the other questions I had was in terms of, I think it was the estimated contribution rates for ERS and TRS. Those are out there, it's just estimated at this point. Do we anticipate that those could change significantly because of the drop in the stock market? That it, for those plans to be able to service the current retirees, would they need to actually increase their contributions from their participants above and beyond what they may have had to do in the past to kind of make up for the change in the portfolio values?
In the past, can you hear me?
Yes.
In the past, the estimates, especially for TRS, which is the larger retirement system, have been very, very close to where they've come in at. Even when the rates have gone up significantly, if they say it's going to be eighteen percent, it's come in within, I would say, half a percent of that number. But what may, may impact the ERS and TRS for next year is the market plan for this year. Because actually the market, the state budget, just like with schools, with our aid, starts, the retirement system starts in April.
I think that's what I have now.
I just had two questions, and again, they're just really for my contacts. I hope Dr. Hoss, how are we doing, Dr. Hoss? We switched to our, to a high interest savings account, and Tim's projected that that had possibly had a million dollars in revenue. Is that already incorporated in there, projected incorporated?
It's not projected for next year. I think I put in the board notes for this week that there was money transferred into there. The last state payment that came in, we were able to put the ten million dollars into that. The interest rate at the time was about five point, I mean, four point two percent of liquid money. We haven't fully projected that into this year's budget. And for next year, I'm a little apprehensive, not just because I know we'd make more interest, but I'm not sure where the interest rate is going to be going because of the economy right now.
Is there, is there, I mean, is there, we talk ballpark a lot, right? We're guessing at the governor's, you know, budget, we're guessing at a number of other things. We're guessing at OSCE's refund, right, which is never guaranteed.
Yep. There is a calculator that's on the New York class website that we're going to take a look at now that we got the money actually in there and that we have all the, able to be able to release it from our bank, you know, same day and all that. So we're just going to look at the calculator to see if we can update all of our revenue projections. Actually, Michael and I are going to start working on that on Wednesday. The other revenues, if the governor's budget doesn't come in, but we're continually upgrading them. Like today, we found out what we're paying out for, anticipate paying out for health services for next year, for this year. So we look like we can maybe reduce that line item in the budget, the expenditure side for that. So we've been updating them quite fast and fearlessly.
Okay.
And I have one more. Dr. Tim's, again, we, you know, Dr. Tim's, she's useful to bring in somebody with that kind of vast experience at the state level, at the OSCE's level. You know, he obviously mentioned, talked about, you know, when you're looking to find savings, right, start away from the kids, right? And you mentioned that. So when we look at some of these non-mandated items, possible reductions, I see social worker, psychologist, armed security. I know these are, in a respect in my mind, very student-centric positions in terms of what they, what they offer us. For instance, armed security was something that came out of community concerns, you know, societal concerns within, within the past three years. Is the school resource officer mandated?
No, we have, they're not mandated, but we do have a municipal agreement with Sorens through, I think, end of this, coming December.
So I guess, you know, continuing that line of thinking, just in the great taxi poll of we've got a great balance, balance of budget here, would we be thinking about cutting psychologists and social workers, but not an SRO if we have armed security, you know? Because again, I mean, I know we're talking about, well, what are you comfortable with and take one from column A, two from column B, kind of menu option here, but-
I mean, you could also be, right, do we keep the SRO and then reduce security at the secondary campus because somebody's already here on campus? That's where we're going to spend time spent. So like, it could be the same thing.
But on a side of, aside from the mandated items, we spent a lot of time towards the end of last week looking at OSCE's, not just OSCE's services for students, but the technology piece of OSCE's. We just received word that our director, Rocco, did a change that's going to save us nine thousand dollars a year. It's not going to save, you know, a teaching position at this point, but we're looking at every line item on a continual basis.
Do you have any questions?
If not mine, what?
Hello?
Yep.
So along the lines of what Mr. Ball said, as we're looking at non-mandated items, you mentioned something about secondary core teachers. Is that, so is that, I know last year we talked about a team of teachers, there was a reduced number of caseloads. Is that what that is, or?
Yeah. So we, I mean, we find value in teaming, right? But naturally, there is, can be a little bit of inefficiency putting up on class sizes and so forth. So we try to maximize the number of kids with each teacher. But going purely by numbers, right, we could maximize classes more and then that would free up staff.
Okay. So, okay. And so I just wanted to clarify too, so when you talked about, when Jamie presented about the changes in special ed, so that's going to reduce a special ed teacher in the elementary level, but it's going to, it's going to be a wash, but it's going to reduce one teacher at the elementary level?
Well, so it's actually the teacher who goes to our middleway and Woodstock day school. We're repurposing that position to be back within the district. And then our elementary buildings, we each be sending over a special educator to support those, those two buildings.
Okay.
So shoving around. The other thing with that is, is that, right, we're going to have four or five students in that program, right? So that is, in my mind, is a savings because we're not sending them out of districts. And then the hope would be that we could try to bring kids back into our district once everybody sees that as a successful program. So in turn, you know, or even we can take, you know, kids from elsewhere.
Okay. I don't know if I have any more questions yet. No, you go ahead. I gotta, I gotta flip through this book. See if I can find my notes. Forty pages.
Hello?
Yep.
Are there any calculations where we consider going up the tax cap?
That is a board decision. So if we're willing to have that conversation, I'd be happy to put together, you know, what that would look like.
Thank you. Two questions. The first one's probably easier. Are there any leftover funds from this year's budget that would be put into the delta that we have right now?
She was like, let me answer that.
Yes, there's going to be remaining funds within the budget. What we're going through right now is we're making sure that all the money that we feel needs to be encumbered for the rest of the year is done. We just went through the OSCE's number. We have the money that we have saved from the not having that insurance premium for this year. So that's a million dollars that we know will be left in there. And we're just looking to see what else that we can do for this year to help us that we wouldn't have to do next year.
So it would be like a, we would have that information by the twenty-second?
Yes. But it'll continually be updated.
Sure. But it's a ballpark number.
But, right, so as of Dr. Tim's presentation, it was roughly like three million dollars that may be unspent.
And then the other question. So the non-mandated items, I think you mentioned for armed security, like three hundred thousand dollars, something like that. Is there numbers associated with these other non-mandated items that have been calculated?
Yeah.
No. What are they? What are the numbers?
The numbers?
Yeah.
I think some of them are.
Are they in? No, the non-mandated.
Yeah. Let me just pull up. All right. So armed security is, as I said, three hundred fifty thousand dollars athletics. So if we were to reduce modified athletics, stipends alone are roughly seventy-five thousand dollars. That does not include transportation to events. If we reduce schedules and then reduce coaches, so that's going from, say, you know, like I said, in basketball, twenty games down to eighteen, maybe depending on the season, a game or two. Each game roughly costs, if we host a game with two officials and a chaperone, it's roughly like, three fifty-ish to host the game, right? So like a varsity basketball game, there's a pure varsity basketball game, you've got two officials, you give them a hundred dollars, plus a chaperone, all right? If we travel to a place, then we're paying for buses, which is, next year's going to be, what's like one oh four per hour, all right? So, but by reducing the schedules and reducing those coaches- All right? So, so, but by reducing the schedules and reducing those coaches, we're looking somewhere between probably 16 to 20,000 dollars. Not a significant sum, but every little bit, right? Athletic trainer, that's salary. Club stipends, I forget that number off the top of my head. Like, I have that on the spreadsheet. Social worker, right, it's going to depend on the lowest salary for those. So I can share those with you. Psychologists, core, core teachers, salary, lowest individuals, department chairpersons, we could pull that one. Right? If we reduce like elementary art library and, and music, right, it's going to be a conversation of how much, right? Are they still going to get, are they going to get it one per 12 days versus one per six days and have one person go between all three elementary schools? Right? It's supposed to prove the salary, salary. Field trips, field trip amount was?
Transportation amount that we put into the next year's budget is $43,000.
So I can formalize the other numbers for you. But I think the thing to stress is that, right, comparatively, and I may be a little biased here, but SROs has been pretty lean compared to other districts, right? Last year, we, we reduced clerical staff. We go to any, any proposed reductions in clerical staff because, but we're, we're getting behind with what we have, right? They're doing an amazing job. But I think to kind of pushing more work onto our clerical staff is going to be not manageable. Last year, there were, there were reductions in a woman called non-mandated TAs, right? This year, you can see that up there because we're at the level where every TA, in my mind, is mandated because they need to be there when the special educator is not there. So we are kind of running at a lean level. If that makes sense.
She's on, yeah, I'll go last.
Yeah, just to piggyback on something that Carol had asked. When we talk about the core secondary teachers, what do we know right now, like on average, what is the class per student load in the secondary, for the core classes? So like the LA is the math, et cetera. Like what, right now, like what do we, what is that kind of class level like? Do we know?
I, I have, I have it printed out of like everybody's case list, so I can put that together. And like, but like, so with a cap of 120 students, right, some staff may have, you know, classes that might have 25, 30 kids in it and then have a class of like five or six, right? Just math that.
Okay. And then kind of along those lines, one of the other questions was, when we looked at, you know, in putting the third section of KHL for sixth grades, we had to add that for fifth grade. Have we looked at the other elementary enrollment class sizes in terms of, I think April 1st was the due date for any special permission? So are there any special permissions that are being granted that if not granted, we would be able to collapse a section in any of those buildings?
Sure. So I have now looked at the new ones that came in, but all the ones last year, they were great and they helped us. So in some ways, it actually helped a lot of, because some people were going into recording, so kind of freedom of space at KHL. So if it's beneficial to us, by freedom of space, definitely can. We did also, I think I shared this before, we did maybe identify, we did identify a section that would possibly move the students to, to recording from KHL. That would be, that would impact a smaller amount than redistricting everybody, but it would free up space at KHL. So that's something where our self-contained students can mainstream more easily. Because even if, right, you know, if there's 24 kids in a grade, but we've got two more kids who need to mainstream, then it's 26 kids in a, in a class, which is not ideal. So.
I don't, I don't really have any questions. I, if I look at this list, right, we could, we could take this list from, from last year, right? And it's the same list we, we discussed. And if we look at this list, and this is the list we're going to go off of, we're going to have the same conversation next year, right? It's always going to be those non-mandated things. It's always going to be that low hanging fruit of, let's not have field trips. We have to, I believe, to do this right. We understood it from our financial analysis, which Dr. Tim's gave us, was 10 years ago, when they went three or four years and, and did a great thing and went under the cap, which at that particular time looked fantastic, actually has put us in an $8 million revenue hole today, right? That $8 million, those going under the tax cap that we would have at our disposal today. So while we, we found out what happened going above the tax cap last year happened, and we may have to have that discussion again, but I don't think it's about the tax cap. And I don't think it's about non-mandated items. I think it's about rolling up our sleeves and sizing this district for the size that it is and not the size that it was 10 years ago and 12 years ago. The other thing with some of these broad buckets, and Dr. Ursch, you know how I feel about this. I think there are way too many sacred cows here. When Mr. Ball says we look at our security, I think we have to rethink how we do our SRO. I, I don't think anything can be left alone. I also think we don't look at things like athletics or modified athletics. Instead of trying to be everything to everyone, let's pick things that we do and do it really well. And what I mean by that, and this is for everybody listening, is instead of saying we're going to cut modified athletics, look at the kids participating in a certain sport. And if there are five kids participating in a certain sport, that coach and those buses cost the same as the sport that has 30 kids in it. There's no difference. We don't pay a, a cheaper stipend. And it's the same thing for the clubs, the after-school clubs. If we have a club that has three kids in it, that, that, that stipend is the same stipend as the teacher who leads key club and the bigger clubs. And I know and I understand that that club may be the respite for those three kids. Well, then us as a district have to figure out what to do with those three kids as opposed to just paying the teacher a stipend to do something after school with them. Those are the kind of decisions we have to make. I don't make it neat. It can be these broad brush, hey, we're going to cut modified athletics. Because what happens, what's going to happen is if we do that, we are going to be having the same discussions next year. Well, let's look at the non-mandated. Let's look at our athletic training. We have shown the value that the athletic training delivers to 400 students day in and day out here. So to me, while the state may say it's non-mandated, the students and the coaches and the instructors in our school have said it's mandated. Maybe not by the state, but it's shown its value. So that one should come off the list. And other things that aren't showing the level of value, we need to look at. And we need to look at, we have 14 days from today to the 22nd. That is more than enough time to look at everything in detail and make those tough decisions. Reducing scheduling, great idea. It's an option. But let me tell you what's going to happen. You're going to reduce basketball by two games. What's going to happen is the basketball club, which does tremendous amount of fundraising and has a tremendous club balance, is going to put those two games on with their club money. The tennis team or the track team that doesn't do a lot of fundraising is not going to be able to add those matches back. So the, 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 the undervalued sports teams, we're going to have an equity problem, right? And there's, there's 50 kids on the track team, but they don't do a ton of fundraising. So they're going to have some meat cut because we did. The baseball team, well-funded. If you cut two games from them and there's a bunch of donors associated with the baseball program, those two games will be added back before they're cut from the budget. There can be no sacred caps. Antioch, and I'm sorry I'm being long-winded a little bit right now. Antioch right now has always had a history of very solid baseball. This year, they don't have baseball and mud above modified because they looked at the number of students that were going to go out for JV and varsity and it was not cost beneficial. Are there some kids who would have liked to play baseball at JV and, and, and the varsity level? Sure, they cut baseball. Roundback, two years ago, won a sectional title in basketball. This year, they did away with their varsity baseball, basketball team because there wasn't enough participation. We've got to get rid of this. Everything starts with the non-mandated and roll up our sleeves and size this thing correctly so that we're not simply looking to pass a budget every year to have the same things we had last year, that we can actually add things to our students and, and, and have things that other districts have and keep building on that and have it be better. So sorry, that's my long-winded, and you just got my board president remarks. I won't do it again. In this, in this project that, that Dr. Tim's, you know, created for us, this, this investigation, right, you went back all the way to 2012. Anywhere in there, was there zero-based budgeting done? Has, has this district ever visited zero-based budgeting? And zero-based budgeting is simply starting with zero and justifying every expense that you have as you build a budget? Or have these all just been rollovers?
I do not know about the history in SROs, but I do know last year, we went through every line, cost and everything out, you know. Last year was the first time that we had gone through the insurance and actually calculated what the insurance costs were going to be, right, as far as I know. So, you know, we're going through things, looking at lines, seeing historical, historical trends, what could be reduced and so forth. But we're to the point where we're taking, you know, a couple hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars here and so forth, right? I mean, to get the real change, to get ourselves right, right, this is going to be, if, if we look at kind of the elementary level, right, we are as efficient as we can be to a degree, right? There's always some efficiencies that we can pick up based on the enrollments in each of our buildings, right? So to become more efficient, we are going to look at the enrollments in each one of our buildings.
Okay. I, I ask the question just because of, you know, following up with Mr. Brown's comment, you know, about how granular we're, we're taking a look at some of those, those, those things. So bottom, bottom line, and we, we don't necessarily think that, that historically, these budgets have been anything other than rolled over from one year to the next.
I can speak to it. I was, I was on.
Okay. Big topic. Anybody, just one last. Any other questions yet?
Not question, but I think what Dr. Ursch was asking of us was some direction as to what he wants us, like what we would, you know, how are we going to alleviate this 3.15, $2 million gap? Yeah, I understand that we will be coming up with positive differential this year. Like we, we're not going to have to use, I think we appropriated almost $3 million of our fund balance, like between fund balance and reserves last year just to balance the budget. I was uncomfortable doing it then. We didn't have to use it this year, which was great, but I'd be uncomfortable using, you know, trying to use all of, you know, fund balance and reserves to meet this difference. And, and I kind of echo what Jeff said in terms of, you know, we're, we're looking at the same things every year and, you know, we need to get to a place where we're going to have, put some savings in our budget this year that will carry over year to year. And so, you know, I'd like to see some sort of, I guess, looking at the expenses and see what can we cut that may have a longer-term savings. And I don't know what amount that is, but something to that effect. And then I, obviously, we're going to need to use some fund balance and reserves to balance it as we have in the past. I just don't really want to do $3 million if that's possible.
Anybody else?
Okay. I just got to finish up a couple things.
Yeah.
Just some general updates. So Morris site work projects, we did receive one bid. We're going to approve that work tonight. That's at Morris. I'll show you an overview quickly. Recording capital outlet project, this was for the ADA addresses. We actually did not get any bids, so we're working with the architects and our lawyers to see if we're going out to bid again, reaching out to some contractors to kind of draw up some interest. RFP for small buses, we have two proposals. We're reviewing those now. Hopefully we'll have, you know, answers within the next week or so. RFP for internal honor, we got one proposal. We met with them yesterday for that. And then we have a RFP for external honor, which is due on 15th. Okay. Morris site work, so they, we, because we came in under budget, we're pointing to it as our capital project, we're able to do work that was taken out of their original proposal. So all this stuff has already been approved by state ed. We can just get the work done. So we're going to be re, big enough to repaving the bus loop, the playground area, adding some additional blacktop over here. Ms. Jane Greco's kids are actually designing what the, what would be painted for the playground area. They will also be resurfacing the parking lot and then putting in a walkway to the back door. Does that work will happen this summer?
And just to be clear, since, since we're talking about budget, that is part of the capital project.
Right, so that is not.
And made more, it's not in the budget, it's not going to be voted on.
Correct.
It's already covered.
Yes.
I just want, I'm sure some people say, wow, you're paid. Okay.
Good. All right. I think I'm up next for the blueprint update too. I'll be quick.
Executive summary.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary.
So I was planning, we did a good quarterly update on our blueprint. So we're going to kind of zoom through this. I'm just going to highlight some of the elements from our four priority areas or the goals, academic excellence, in the community engagement, professional culture, and the student experience. The entire thing, our kind of living document is linked in here. When you open it up, you will see the goals, you will see the action steps that the committee identified. You will see our initial rating back in October, November time, when we met with our district leadership team. And then you will see evidence in each month going out, or not each month, but each quarter going out. Okay? So anybody can look at that, that's there. Just some things to highlight. Priority, priority one, academic excellence. A big part of this is the, is the power of our own portion of graduate, right? So what skills, qualities, well, our graduates have as they walk across the stage, right, is what it, what it is. We, we did some brainstorming. We, we gave a proposal to the committee. We're working with their feedback and we're hoping the board will adopt that soon. Right? Increase in family community engagement, secondary team for the guidance team. I spent a lot of time increasing engagement for that. So counselors have been going into classes. Each child was given a sheet where they identified which classes they should take, right? That required them to talk to their teachers to see where they should go next year. That sheet was encouraged to bring home, get a parent's signature. They're meeting with parents and then we, we will be sending home a, not a schedule, but here are the courses that your child picked for next year. So parents are aware. This is one of the big things that came out of our surveys and just conversations with parents in general. Professional culture, we're continuing to work with our plan pilot and, as well as our junior high staff are working on alternative interview assessments. It is with our humanities, but it's also in science, one of our science classes as well. All right? So it's under traditional tests, a more of a portfolio of project-based learning. Research ways to implement instructional rounds. We have started instructional rounds or learning walks, rather. So this is a group of individuals going in the classrooms, looking for targeted things, right? So if they're looking at the engagement rubric, right, seeing where, how students are engaged. And it could also be for, for special education in terms of how, how, how the classroom is running and functioning. The SROs student experience, a big one I'm going to throw out there, right, said develop a workable and meaningful classroom protocol regarding use of cell phones, Apple watches, and earbuds. Our policy committee has spent a couple sessions now on developing a, a cellphone or an electronic use policy, which would prohibit AI electronic uses during the school day, all right? Only if you're, it's only a school supply device. And lastly, Chris is still here. She held a passion fair with her one book, one school. So students voluntarily shared their passion with the entire building, the cafeteria, 40 students presented. I'm going to highlight Ms. Jen Arcofanti's class, who had every one of her students share one of their passions. So it was super cool.
And that's it. Okay. We'll move to board member remarks. Start at this side.
I just wanted to say a couple things.
I guess you can hear me? Hello? Sorry. And just a couple, I wanted to mention a couple things. One, I wanna thank people who were involved in the Harlem Wizards, that was a couple weeks ago, it was a great fundraising event for a couple of our PTAs, I just wanna thank all the behind-the-scenes people who got, you know, organized it, who were there the day, and all the teachers and staff who got out there to play with the Wizards, I think, you know, just seemed smiling the days of that day, I think it was a great event, and I just wanna thank everyone involved. Secondly, I just wanted to just mention about this, this social media post that was, you know, out there over this past week, I'm not gonna go through the specifics, I think that was addressed by the, the, it was just the report of the social media post was addressed by Dr. Ursig, and then the board response to the community, but I do wanna say that as volunteers here, you know, we are elected to these positions, and we put ourselves out there, and our information is somewhat public, and we expect to receive emails from parents about concerns with their kids, about concerns that they have with district policy. But when I get an email from a porn site, because somebody put out there that we, our emails should be scammed, and we should be put on porn lists, that is not acceptable, and that is not how we should engage with the board, and that is not how we resolve issues within our district and our community. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, I wanted to speak to some of the same, some of the, that same topic, that I would engage. I was doing some reading on this, you know, on the topic of, you know, schools and what we're all having, what everyone involved in schools are having to deal with right now, and, like it or not, education, who we educate, what we teach, who gets to participate, whose voices get heard, who's supported, who's not, all of these things can fall into heading Educators are expected to navigate sometimes impossible standards of neutrality and perfection, if they're even to talk about what's happening in the world. They're expected to be a role model, but not necessarily being like, they can be who they are. We all care deeply, everyone here on the board, everyone of our administrators, everyone of our educators. I don't expect people to say nothing. We want people to be engaged in civics, we want everyone to participate in civics. We may not all choose the same sides, but we are, you know, for whatever reasons, but I think we all want benefit of these common piece of setting the right example for our students on how to engage. That is my only expectation, and I appreciate statements from, from Mr. Ursig, Dr. Ursig, I appreciate, I appreciate everyone wanting to be engaged, but I do think it's unfortunate that we end up going to, and have some of the, some, some of the messages that we will be receiving not to that specific instance, that isn't how we engage, and so I hope we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Skye. Ms. Keller.
These are May, April, May, these are exciting times in the school year, so I just wanna remind everybody, there's a lot of, a lot of awesome things that are going on out there. Meredith does a great job sharing with us, many of you are, are participating, and seeing your, your kids and your neighbors participate dances, honor society events, band concerts, choral concerts, and obviously the culminating event for a school district, the graduation is June, so during these exciting months, as we, as we are looking toward wrapping up a school year, and spring is approaching, and summer is approaching, I just wanna give once again my yearly reminder to everyone to think about safety first, and keep those students in mind, and student drivers in mind, and all of these, these upcoming events. My hope is everyone stays safe. The only other comments I'd like to make, ultimately, and I think, I think everybody can glean from the questions and other comments of the board, that the fiscal priorities and the budget are, are obviously the, the highest, highest priority that we have here in the district. For those of you that weren't present, when Dr. Tibbs made his presentation, the phrase fiscal cliff was used, that Sorby's is facing. And again, so those of you that weren't present, you maybe have seen these slides online, essentially, you know, he, he, he unpacked essentially about the, the past twelve to thirteen years, and, and really, in a, in a very impressive fashion, was able to show how decisions that were made at the district level were, were what a grandmother might call penny-wise pound foolish, right? We satisfied some immediate need back then, and unfortunately, it, it often is that the political need that you're satisfying, pardon me, that the need you are satisfying back then is political. And, and very often, there's no acknowledgement or recognition that a decision like that is gonna have compounding impacts, exponential impacts, and I just wanna, I want people to hear that number again, that, that eight million dollars is money that was left on the table by Sorby's School District through previous administrations and previous budgets, simply because of the manner in which the reimbursements, and the manner in which tax cap and the pilot payments, and, and all these different types of minutia are calculated. So, we really need to think about the long-term health of the district, and it's not easy to do when you're focusing on pop-ups, right? We have, we have pop-ups on our computers, we all know what they are, the guy that invented them, I think, has said publicly he regrets inventing them, okay? But we have, we have pop-ups as well, right? In our lives, we have pop-ups in our district, and we, we had pop-ups, you know, this past month. Conversations that don't have anything to do with the fiscal cliff, conversations that don't have anything to do with the long-term fiscal health of, of a, of a school budget. And, and I, you know, I think that this board, the next board, the next board, there really needs to be a, a sense of, of passion around preserving, preserving the property, the intellectual property, that is how a school board functions, and preserving the statutory, you know, role of, of a school board, and not getting into the weeds. We have one very, two, three maybe, max, very, very important jobs, one is hiring a superintendent, and, and two is creating and passing a budget. So, in light of these things, and in light of these conversations, I just want to remind everyone that we were told that trying to challenge the cap last year was a good idea by our long-range financial analysts, we were told that trying to challenge the cap last year was something that, had it been successful, it would've gone a long way towards ameliorating this fiscal cliff. So, when we're talking about putting a budget together, I know that you heard me talk about things like zero-based budgeting, and you talked about, you know, us possibly getting granular, I don't want, I don't want to confuse anybody, I'm not losing the horse for the trees. There are short-term gains that can be made by, by careful scrutiny of a, of a, of a district budget, but you can't do so, losing sight of that long, longer-range picture. So, in the next several weeks, as some of these revenue streams continue to get analyzed, and the superintendent and the school business officials begin to, you know, really target down and, and look at the way some of this money is expended, and, and maybe we consider that, that, as Mr. Ransay said, we don't have any, any, we don't have anything that's really so sacrosanct that we can't ask about it, we can't look at it, we can't question whether there's value that is, that is giving worth district. And, and I support that, because I think that that is the biggest, most important thing that, that we can do, is create a budget here that kickstart, it, it kickstarts that long-range fiscal health, and that long-range fiscal planning that, that we require. Thank you.
I'm coming back to you. You wanted me to come back to you. I got nobody else to go to, I can't.
I, I just wanna thank Ms. Churchill for your presentation tonight, I know you really sped that up for us, 'cause we had a long agenda, and thank you to Dr. Ursig for his When I set out to run for Board of Education, I did it with the intent to be a voice of reason, and to try to help make decisions that were best for children. And I continue to feel that way, I truly do. So, whether it is what we are doing, setting a budget, or having those discussions, whether it is reflecting or discussing issues or incidents, like what happened last week, I wasn't privy to what was on Facebook, I've removed myself from Facebook because of those specific things, and I heard it wasn't good. I too received an email, much to my surprise, and when I, I, I didn't understand it until somebody shared with me that someone shared our emails off of, I guess, Facebook or whatever. So, you know, I think it is our job to reflect and discuss on issues, and, and talk about things like this in a fair manner, so that we can hear everyone's opinions, and we can hear everyone's, you know, let everyone have a voice. So, I just wanna say that that's what we intend to do. Thank you.
Okay, I, I pretty much said what I wanted to say before, when I gave my budget things. So, I like the term that Mr. Wall used, in pop-ups, and I understand what Carol is saying about having to discuss some of these things, and they need to be discussed, and I agree with that. But I can tell you, we, I will continue to discuss some of these pop-ups as necessary. But leaving here tonight, I am laser-focused on working with Dr. Ursig, and Shell, I'm getting a budget that is taking us away from a financial cliff, and having us not continually simply getting by. That's not how our district should be. So, from here on out, I will take anybody's email, I will answer their emails, I love getting emails from people regardless of whatever side of the, the issue they're on, but from, from tonight on out, once we leave executive session, I am laser-focused on April twenty-second, and I think it's our duty here to deliver a, a budget and a financial plan that doesn't just have us subsisting living, but having us provide things for our kids, and provide other things for our kids.
All right.
So, thank you.
All right, moving on. All right, J. Personnel, instructional and non-instructional, we have items J one through three, which are resignations, leaves of absence, and some appointments, including substitutes and volunteers, and then our showmanship principals as well are in there. Can I have a motion for J one through three? By Mr. Myers, seconded by Ms. Bellerosa. Any discussion on any of the items? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, business office recommendations, we have the treasurer's report, revenue and appropriations, internal claims, getting rid of some obsolete computer equipment surplus items, and an agreement with Tyler Technologies. So, can I get a motion for items K one through six? Who's that? Mr. Ball, seconded by Ms. Keller, any discussion on any of those items, any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board action items, items L one through fourteen, and in here includes our, our polling inspectors for our budget, agreement with those reporting services, old agreements, agreements with our district attorney for the coming, upcoming year. Mr. Well, seconded. Ms. Bellerosa, any discussion on any of the items, any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committee reports, any exciting news out of the audit committee?
Nothing to report, thank you.
See, that's, that's a good report. Facilities, yeah, I know we had a couple, and it actually should be mentioned, so.
So, in facilities, next month, May, the first Wednesday in May, Krista Carlo from Bernie Diner's office is gonna present to us opportunities for another capital project, based on the amount we have in reserves, based on when our debt is falling off, and what kind of scope the project could be, so if that's of interest to you, I encourage you to participate in our facilities meeting the first Wednesday of May.
Policy committee?
Yeah, we have a policy committee, April first, our next policy committee will be May sixth, pretty, been in attending, as you heard earlier, discussion and policies being developed around the, the cellphone ban implementation, again, recognizing that there's some, some variation in terms of what the actual direction will be coming out of the governor's office, but that is being reviewed and discussed, and, and I announced, we do have a next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, now's the time for our second public recognition, anybody who is still out here that would like to approach us.
Hi. I'll just write my name there after. Check one.
Check two.
There you go.
My name's Brandon Christian, and I came down here because of a few reasons, it was nice to sit here though and see how you guys are making the solstices, I guess, to remember it, keeping things going, but there was an incident recently, this past resting season, with Mr. Ursig, and how he handled an investigation for my nephew, and I see he's talking about, like, how to cut sports, and cut things like this. and how he handled an investigation for my nephew. And I see he's talking about like how to cut sports and cut things like this. Wow, he effectively already cut the motherfucking wrestling coach by going after his son. And I see you're talking a lot about how you're going to save money on the budget and this and that. And you talk about cutting arts, cutting sports, helping the, getting games' seasons delayed or like shortened. And the lower sports, you're, are like, they're not financially like valuable sports or, you know, they're not making their own money with donors. So, it's kind of like a weird, weird way of looking at it as far as you saying there should be no like sacred cows or anything like that. But, just with the way that like some words here I've heard over tonight with like that's how we don't solve problems, we shouldn't solve problems in the community with like going after people or whatnot. It's exactly opposite of what I've seen. And I went to Saward East High School here, a long time ago. And this community has changed a lot since then. And I think there's been a lot of like coalescing of people's attitudes, as you were all saying, around political views and whatnot and people going back and forth at each other over their differences and opinions and the way they live. And I feel like my brother and his son, which have nothing to do with what I heard he did with his emails, just shows like a level of incompetency in the way he's doing his job, Mr. Ursic. And I believe that.
Mr. Christian, did you keep your comments to what you want? It's part of our thing, if you read in here, we're not going to attack personnel for your comments. If you have a particular subject that you'd like to talk about.
Well, that's just a factual, well, maybe not factual, my opinion. My opinion of the way he's handling his job as a superintendent.
We're not going to talk about personnel and how somebody did their job.
Well, you were all defending him just before.
If you'd like to address.
You guys are like a human shield and we're talking about what he did earlier this week and how you guys all think it shouldn't matter. You just did that, like one, two, three.
I have no idea, I don't know what you're talking about. I'll give you one more shot and we'll cut this off.
No, about how you all defended this email thing that happened. That's what I saw just a few minutes ago during your public comments. Yeah. And some of the other ones were, you can't always be perfect, someone said that. We're going to treat everybody in a fair manner and let everyone have a voice. It's a little bit funny to hear all that and then hear what you just did to me. You were trying to cut me off for saying something about Mr. Ursic. You wanted to hear, let everybody have a voice. Well, you should listen to what they're saying. And in my opinion, he's showed a few instances in just this past few months that, you know, are not.
Okay, you keep coming back to the same thing, this thing I asked you not to do. So, if you're done, you're done. If not, I'll end it for you.
Oh, you want to end?
It's very clear what we allow, what is here.
I'd just like to say, I would like to see a more, a higher level of, you know, I guess, character when it comes to how this town is working and functioning. Because in my experience, it's went down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your opinion, thank you. Okay, we are, I'm going to look for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing superintendent's hearing appeal, contract negotiations with CESA, CESA, ASWA and the CSEA and then matters that are leading to the appointment of a particular organization. Good move. Mr. Wall, seconded. Ms. Bellerosa. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And just to relay that when we do come out, it will lead to adjournment meeting so that we know other business to vote on, okay? Thank you.
Take the motion to read the meeting open session.
Aye.
Mr. Wells, time is?
Line forty-four.
Line forty-four, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to include a resolution out of the executive session. The resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Soryu Central School District hereby affirms the superintendent's decision and suspension of student number one seven two four zero issued and further authorizes the board president to inform the parent of student number one seven two four zero of its decision. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to have that add to the agenda?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Paul, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
I learned last time on twenty-two.
So, Ms. Wells, seconded by?
No, no, no.
Yes, yeah, remember when we added it last time? Adding it is the vote on. We can do another one. It is, it is, it was when Melissa Badger me from the stage from the back.
Okay.
Also move on that.
Yeah, so, all right. A motion to accept the change in the agenda.
We already did that.
We already did that. We never were.
Motion to accept the?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Wells?
Sir.
Seconded by Ms. Keller. Any discussion? Wells in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Wells, seconded by Mr. Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I can take.
We don't have to do that.